Good evening. I'd like to go ahead and call the Pitt County Board of Commissioners. June 20th, 2022, meeting to order.
I want to make a motion to excuse Commissioner Colson.
Second. It has been moved in second. Sorry, can you vote again? Motion passes. If everyone could please stand for the invocation and the pledge, please.
Shall we pray? The turnip pile we come first of all to give you thanks. Thank you to the Lord for our life, health, and strength. As now that you're coming to this meeting, help us to make the decision that will be pleasing to thee. In the holy name we pray.
Please face the flag. Our pleasure is to declare the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Say move.
Oh, a motion to approve and move the presentations up before item number five.
Second.
Yes.
It has been moved and properly seconded.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we've actually had our roll call. Can we do that first? Wasn't the first motion to excuse Commissioner Colson?
That's correct.
And then we've got to do the vote.
Is that what you were saying?
They did it two times. Did it not take?
Sorry.
Technical difficulties today?
Hello, would this be roll call screen?
All right, if we could now move on to the vote for the approval of the agenda. With the changes. Motion passes. Now move on to the presentations.
Yes, if we could go down front, Mr. Chairman, and if we could ask the D.H. Conley Lady Vikings softball team to come forward. Team members, okay, terrific. It is my pleasure, Mr. Chairman, and those who are viewing, to present a resolution to the D.H. Conley Varsity Women's Softball Team, which reads, "Pitt County Board of Commissioners Resolution of Recognition Honoring the D.H. Conley Varsity Softball Team", and says, "Whereas the 2022 D.H. Conley Varsity Softball Team played softball with remarkable success and dignity as representatives of Pitt County and the state of North Carolina. And whereas the 2022 D.H. Conley Varsity Softball Team won the NCHSA A-4A State Championship by beating East Forsyth's 2 to 1. And whereas the D.H. Conley Varsity Softball Team finished with an overall record of 32 and 12-0 in the Big Carolina Conference, with finishing first place. And whereas the players, coaches, and family of the 2022 D.H. Conley Varsity Softball Team deserve congratulations for their time, effort, and resources that they committed to going all the way and winning the NCHSA A-4A State Championship." Team members on the team this year are Emma Adams, Savannah Akins, Brianna Bowers, Merritt Doughty, Carson Fleming, Olivia Hadnight, Olivia Knight, Aiden McHugh, Trinity Nichols, Emma Kate Reynolds, Anna Sawyer, Mia Trueblood, and Riley Trueblood. And for the softball staff, Wayne Dean's head coach, Meredith Whitehead assistant coach, Jana Bullard assistant coach, Tamiya Pittman manager, and Kyla Silver manager. Now therefore be it resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize the outstanding achievements of the 2022 D.H. Conley Varsity Softball Team and congratulates the players, coaches, and families for bringing the NCHSA A-4A State Championship to Pitt County, North Carolina. Adopted this the 20th day of June 2022 by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, and Mr. Chairman, if you would present it to their coach, we have certificates for each of the players as well. This is a big deal, and we are so proud of your entire team and so appreciative for coming here today. So we have here with us tonight certificates for each of you. And for those who are present, we will hand your certificates and give the rest to the coach, but I'll call out each of the names and then pass them to you. Just hand them out, okay. So Emma Adams is not present. Savannah Akins, Brianna Bowers, Merritt Doughty, and Carson Fleming. Olivia Hadnot, those are my coaches, here we go. Olivia Hadnot? Thank you. Olivia Knight? Aiden McHugh? Thank you. Trinity Nichols? Emma Kate Reynolds? Anna Sawyer? Mia Trueblood? And Riley Trueblood? Children of a county employee, am I correct? So thank you so much for making us extra proud. And for the coaches, Coach Wayne Dean's? Meredith Whitehead? Thank you. And then we have Jana Bullard, Tanya Pittman, and Kayla Silver. So with that, and was this your first year as 4A? You've been 4A for softball.
We've won in 2015.
Excellent, wonderful. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you for making Pitt County so proud. Thank you so much.
Do they get a copy of the pieces?
Oh, yes, all of those are papers, yes. Thank you so much. Our second presentation this evening is to our June Employee of the Month. If Ann Heath would please come forward. And if you brought me with you, you're welcome to bring your... Okay. As we are pleased to do each month of the year, it's always my pleasure to recognize outstanding employees who go the extra mile above and beyond, who were selected by their peers and reviewed and then recommended for Employee of the Month. So this month, congratulations go to Ann Heath. Mrs. Heath was nominated and selected by the Employee of the Month Committee for being an exceptional employee. Quote, "Ann is an outgoing and outstanding employee who goes above and beyond to help others. She has learned some American Sign Language, finger spelling, and phrases, as well as Spanish, to better communicate with staff and the public." And if I can just add to that, I thought this was so neat, the housekeeping staff from ECVC who clean in the tax office, one of the folks assigned to the tax office is deaf. And Ann learned some limited sign language so that she could communicate with her in the evenings when she was there. Not required from her job, just because she's a compassionate and kind human being. And for Spanish, that's not required in her duties, but because we serve so much of the Hispanic population in the tax office, it took it upon herself and her own time to do that to improve her customer service. In 2002, Ann began her career with Pitt County in the legal department and was involved with the Tax Warr closure program and assisted with the Pitt County Citizens Academy. In 2008, she was transferred to the Tax Administration Department. Mrs. Heath is a state-certified paralegal, but is also certified as an assistant tax collector, real property appraiser, personal property appraiser, and mapper. Along with her routine responsibilities, she also assists with the Board of Equalization and Review, the tax review board. So for all of that and for going above and beyond, we have for you today a certificate which reads, "Certificate of Recognition, Employee of the Month, June 2022, presented to Ann Heath, Tax Administration, and recognition of your dedication and exemplary service to Pitt County government and the citizens that we serve." And the chairman will present that to you along with a $100 check to thank you for what you've done. Thank you. And we get a picture. Not so fast. Thank you so much, Ann. All right, that concludes our presentations down here. And then our third presentation, while we're heading back up, Kelly Andrews will come forward, and in the meantime, do we need a motion on the D.H. Conley resolution? I believe so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. We could all vote, please. Motion passes.
And Mr. Chairman, in keeping with the presentations that we've been doing, you will hear now a very brief presentation from Kelly Andrews, Director of Economic Development, spotlighting that department.
I did promise to be brief, so Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I am unveiling to you our new strategic plan for 2022-23. And for over 60 years, Pitt County has had dedicated economic development staff, and this board has provided funding and support to move goals forward, even as these goals often do shift. One such shift came last year when we became the Economic Development Department, pivoting from the Industrial Development Commission model. We have always and continue to identify industrial development as the area in which we can provide the biggest return on investment for our taxpayers. However, there are many other aspects under the umbrella of economic development that can and must be addressed in order to spur additional growth. Economic development is an overarching process that includes improving the well-being and quality of life of a community and its citizens. For any economic development organization, this must be undertaken with a collaborative approach with many partners, focused on specific goals and objectives. We created this new plan to ensure that we are focusing our lead and support efforts on, one, areas in which we have the staff, the funds, and the capacity to succeed; and, two, areas in which we should be focused to fulfill the county's mission as well as our economic development plan's mission. Thank you. Slide, okay. This exercise was endeavored with great intentionality, with an honest and realistic look at our core competencies, those of our various partners, analysis of other strategic plans, and with current and future projections in mind. We considered longstanding challenges such as social and economic disparities, the skills gap, the rural-urban divide. We recognized pandemic-induced or augmented challenges such as the national labor shortage, supply chain bottlenecks, rising inflation, and the looming prospect of a recession. There are once-in-a-generation funds on the table that we may never see again in our tenure. And we have unique assets such as a major university, enormous healthcare system, and an array of partners with specific expertise in key focus areas. With all these factors, as well as the county's values and mission in mind, this strategic plan evolved as follows. Our mission is to champion vibrant communities, thriving businesses, a prosperous economy, and opportunities for all in Pitt County. This bold mission is meant to be accomplished in collaboration with partners. We will lead in some areas, we will partner in many areas, and support in others. We are Pitt County. The A and the R in the E in Pitt County represent attraction, retention, and expansion. And these are the traditional focus areas that we have looked at. And these strategies that we will come up with have all of these outcomes in mind for everything we do. Attraction of investment, development, and talent, retention of companies, graduates, and residents, expansion of companies, tax base, and opportunities. These outcomes are the end game. But this new plan provides a look through a new lens at what we do, why we do it, and what we have the capacity to do in leadership, in partnership, and in supporting roles to achieve these outcomes. Looking at our roles in facilitating these outcomes, we came up with six focus areas and corresponding goals and objectives to not only fulfill our mission, but move toward our vision for the future, which is that Pitt County will become a well-known destination for thriving communities, business growth, and world-class talent. "Become" being the operative word, and it happens to also be an acronym for our new focus areas. We want to become the Pitt County that we envision for the future. The B and the E in "become" stands for the built environment. This is product development. The C and the O is collaborative opportunities. This is support for the people and places that we serve and marketing internally and externally with our partners. And the M and the E is meaningful engagement. This is existing industry support and community outreach. And these three focus areas are the core of fulfilling our mission and vision. The built environment is critical for economic development success. Pitt County Economic Development as a public entity is best positioned to lead in analysis and planning, development for industrial sites, buildings, and the necessary infrastructure to attract new investment and jobs. This includes shell buildings and industrial site preparation. We will lead efforts to identify, develop industrial properties and support efforts to upgrade utilities and roads, extend broadband, and expand options at our airport. In addition, we own the Technology Enterprise Center on North Green Street. It's been in business about 25 years. And we will continue to maintain and manage this facility and work to attract new tenants. We will support other locations such as Seed and Intersect East that support entrepreneurial growth in Pitt County. Economic development is a team sport, and we aim to expand and enhance our collaborative opportunities and strategic partnerships. We need partners to do most anything, and they need us. Most importantly, we need to look cohesive to outside investors, developers, and companies visiting our communities. We will partner in efforts to attract and expand companies, develop incentives to close deals, and support specific marketing initiatives, including our convention and visitor's destination marketing programs. Focus area three is meaningful engagement, and we will take a leading role to accomplish our goals. We have a business retention and expansion position whose whole focus is to lead and support outreach efforts to our existing industries. We have also added agribusiness as an area in which we will lend more support as agriculture is still a major contributor to Pitt County and the state's economy, just as industry is. In addition, community outreach is going to be key to keeping up with our communities, their respective goals, projects, and challenges. It will also help us keep a finger on the pulse of the barriers to employment and upward mobility and will help us do a better job of advocating for change. We cannot attract new investment if we do not understand our communities, address critical needs, and advocate for rural issues. We also aim to share our successes and learn from our setbacks. We are implementing software to track projects and programs to better serve our public and our clients. All of these goals will be measured and tracked in areas such as the ones listed on the slide. In these areas, we will have direct and in some cases indirect impact. All will provide a snapshot of progress based on specific measures and benchmarks for success. We welcome any feedback or questions on this plan, which you have in its entirety in your board packets. We are Pitt County. With this new plan and approach, together, we will take Pitt County to the next level of being a leader in the state and best in the East. And we thank you as always for your continued support.
Thank you.
No questions?
Now move on to public addresses to the board. Gentry Penner?
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and read the board's statement. "Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each person will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. A speaker representing a group of individuals in attendance will be allowed up to five minutes. A total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking."
I'm Gentry Penner. I live in the city of Greenville, and I have a prepared statement for you.
Will you pull your microphone up to your...
Is that better? I stand before you today with over 23 years of law enforcement experience. I have witnessed a drastic change within the law enforcement profession, which has led us to the dilemma you all face today. What do you need to do? Law enforcement is in uncharted territory right now, and it's being challenged in ways that have never been seen. The number of murders in the United States jumped by nearly 30% in 2020. Compared with the previous year, this is the largest single-year increase ever recorded in the country. Law enforcement line-of-duty deaths increased 55% in 2021 to include the highest intentional killings of law enforcement officers in over 20 years. Law enforcement morale is down, and retirement and resignations have spiked. A survey of nearly 200 departments by the Police Executive Research Forum shows a 45% increase in retirement rate and a 20% increase in resignations in '20 and '21. According to a survey last year by the National Police Foundation, 86% of departments reported staffing shortages. Here are some local examples. Durham Police Department, shortage of 98 officers. Winston-Salem Police Department, shortage of 96 officers. Asheville Police Department, shortage of 80 officers. Raleigh Police Department, shortage of 160 officers. Greensboro Police Department, shortage of 45 officers. Goldsboro Police Department, shortage of 28 officers. Wake County Sheriff's Office, shortage of 49 deputies. The Pitt County Sheriff's Office currently has a shortage of 18 deputies, and we will be competing both locally and national against agencies to retain and hire new deputies. Local agencies are offering significant pay incentives for officers with experience to come to their department and signing bonuses for new applicants. The Fayetteville Police Department is now recruiting in Puerto Rico. Additionally, Fayetteville is offering high wages, signing bonuses, education incentives, and relocation reimbursements. In the last meeting, you agreed to explore the shift differential pay, but we still need to address substantial pay increases for supervisors and veteran officers. My question is this. How many veteran deputies or applicants are you willing to lose to another agency because they see what we are asking you to see? The shortage of law enforcement officers in Pitt County and nationally cannot be disputed, and the number will continue to rise. Pitt County needs to take immediate action to address the retention of veteran officers and attract new applicants. I was in the meeting two weeks ago when Sheriff Dance and her deputies addressed you. One thing I took from that meeting was the commissioner inquiring how we compare to comparable agencies. While this data has its place, utilizing this approach makes us comparable in the state, not the leader in the state. A leader sets the bar. That is what the Pitt County Sheriff's Office is asking you to do. Set the bar with the salary adjustments in order to retain current veteran deputies and attract applicants. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Jones?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Justin Jones, and I live in the Winterville community. I just want to add a little bit to what Mr. Penner just said. Currently, I am responsible for the Sheriff's Office Training and Standards Division. Obviously, we're in charge of standards, I mean, training, excuse me. But one of the biggest issues we're suffering right now is hiring. There is an extensive amount of effort that goes into hiring a deputy, hiring a detention officer, hiring a telecommunicator. Hours, money that goes into hiring them. And the hiring pool is shallow. It is very shallow. There are no people that want to do this anymore. And like you just heard, veteran officers are becoming very few, very few. The sheriff said earlier, the last meeting, she told you all the responsibilities of the sheriff's office. And they are similar to what a police officer would do. You heard about hiring, I mean, pay increases at other agencies. I want to leave you with this. If you were flipping hamburgers at this restaurant and could go two blocks away to flip hamburgers for $3 more an hour, what would you do? Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Poston?
Good evening.
Evening.
I'm Nancy Poston, administrative captain at Pitt County Detention Center. I want to thank you for listening to us. I also want to thank you for approving in the budget what you have so far. What I want to talk to you about tonight is the importance of remaining leaders in the state and best in the East. Since taking a more comprehensive approach to the population we serve, which I want to point out is a representation of our community, several positions stand out as being paramount to this continued success. For the purpose of this conversation, I want to talk to you about three of them. They are the programs coordinator, the social worker, and a second medical officer. Both the programs coordinator and the social worker are invaluable to the success of the programs Sheriff Dance has implemented. Not only are we making a difference in the lives of our population, but we are setting the stage for surrounding counties, receiving recognition around the state, and winning awards. The Pitt County Detention Center just won Jail Innovation of the Year in 2021 because of our programs. And I don't know about you all, but to me, that's an example of being leaders in the state, best in the East. We won that award because of the hard work of the programs coordinator and social worker. Also paramount to providing comprehensive care consistent with the care received in the community and to lessen the load of the housing unit officers, we need a second medical officer. This officer will ensure program volunteers and patients are at appointments and classes on time, as well as ensure mental health staff are getting timely, unimpeded access to their patients. Currently, PCDC has 99 patients identified with a mental health diagnosis. There are 48 in special housing alone. With an average daily population of 350, that is 28% of the population that we serve. This means more attention required, more visits for mental health staff, and requires an officer each visit. And remember, too, this is the number that reflects our community. Hopefully, you can see how much this second medical officer is needed by those numbers alone. Having a second medical officer will also help relieve these tasks currently covered by the shift officers and allow them to focus more on insurance, safety, and security. Before I end this, I want to add that PCDC officers come to work every day and put their lives on the line and do so proudly and unselfishly. Everyone is not able to work at the detention center and hear the gates closed behind them. The sound alone brings a different perspective and makes it difficult for people to agree to work there. I think we can all agree it takes a special person. I would like to make an appeal for the denied pay raises for sergeants and higher. We have supervisors at one level making more money than their direct supervisor. For example, you can have a sergeant making more money than a lieutenant, and so on. This should never happen, and it makes it extremely difficult to motivate future leaders. Also, I firmly believe that shift differential pay would be a positive move in the right direction. Many officers would love to see a permanent shift with... Many officers would love to see a permanent shift with compensation to match for being away from their family overnight. Morale means everything in our profession and this would certainly add to it in a positive light. For all these reasons, along with many more, and to remain leaders in the state and best in the East, we have to show this by having an attractive, appreciative, and competitive salary to not only draw potential employees in, but to keep them too. Without a salary that compares to the stress endured, without a salary that compares to the ease of driving a few extra miles to obtain more money and a benefits package to match it, people start asking, "Why do I want to work there?" We, as a county, can't allow this to happen. We have to be proactive. Let's continue to stand out. Let's continue to make this county a great one. Thank you for your time.
Chris Sires?
Good evening, Chris Sires. I live in the city of Greenville. Good evening, members of the board, Madam County Manager and staff. I would first like to say to each of you, thank you for your service and the opportunity to speak to each of you today. I have not been where you sit, nor have I had the opportunity in making decisions that are being voted on tonight, but I have been in a position that maybe none of you have had the opportunity to experience. I was born in nineteen seventy-six and grew up in a law enforcement family. I convidably remember both my grandfather and father coming home after a long shift of work in the city of Kingston. I can remember being so happy that they were home and safe with me. I can remember the looks on their faces after a hard shift. I can remember all their cool stories, but what I never knew was the cold heart truth behind the uniform and badge. I'm sure you ask why. Why didn't I never hear the bad things? Well, allow me to answer that and put it into perspective for you. We, as law enforcement officers, shield our families from the bad. A bad day at work for most is not the same bad day at work that we often endure. We go from twelve hours of being belittled, punched, kicked, spit on, ridiculed, scrutinized just because of the very uniform that we wear. We go from delivering news to a parent that their child was killed, dealing with the family of lone ones who just learned that their loved one committed suicide, to being a pillar of safety and care for our families. We have to learn to leave the bad behind in our patrol cars and that is not easily done. You see, each and every one in this room will come to a crossroads, whether it is to quit or to win. As a law enforcement officer, quitting is not an option. Losing is not in our vocabulary. We are taught that at all costs, we win and we go home at the end of our shift. Our brothers and sisters in this profession will accept no less, nor will our families. We cannot hide from the evil as we must face it with courage and we must prevail. We must do so with professionalism and cannot make mistakes. Decisions are made in seconds, not in minutes, not in hours. They are not made from behind a desk and they have no studies to compare our decisions with. Law enforcement has changed drastically over the past several years, but one thing that never has changed is the feeling that families have when their loved ones walk out of the house not knowing if this is the last time that they will see their loved one return, and the same feeling of relief when their loved ones return home from work. During my career, I have learned that it takes a strong person to truly be successful in this profession. We must bear the weight of being protectors of our county's citizens and our own families. We must often bear the unfathomable realities of this profession and do so with a smile on our face. We must have open minds and spend a lot of time away from our loved ones. We must sacrifice birthdays, holidays, graduations, and recitals. We must face death with eyes wide open and do not have the option to close our eyes or turn away. We must suppress the true horrors that we see and endure and learn to function with these never-ending visions, even after our day is done. You must have a mindset that I may very well take my last breath while wearing this very uniform that I wear today standing in front of you, this very badge that I proudly wear upon my chest, and the patch that prominently reads "Pitt County." While we may not agree on everything, there is one thing that we can all come together on and that is that there are very special people that work for the Pitt County Sheriff's Office and unequivocally, we will wear this badge with pride and our dedication will never falter. We want you to know and understand that there is no monetary amount that can replace the burden that is placed on our feet, nor it will replace time lost with our families, but we deserve compensation for the immense sacrifices that each of us make on a daily basis. I ask that each request that Sheriff Dance has made and approached on voting with an open mind. Just as in the last hearing, tonight, you will likely be presented with information that came from various sources and studies. But information that can never and will never be learned from a comparison study is the sacrifices that your deputies, your guardians, make on a daily basis. I ask each of you to look past these studies and understand that we are your protectors. We are who you will call if your fears ever come to reality. We will never turn our backs on you and I implore you not to turn your backs on us now. Thank you.
Is it Ali Best or Ally?
I'm Ally Best. I live in Greenville. It was Tom McCall that said, "Heroes are not giant statues framed against a red sky. They are people who say, 'This is my community and it's my responsibility to make it better.'" Barry Allen was one that said, "Not every hero wears a mask. Some heroes save the day in the simplest of ways by just being there for us or letting us know we're believed in." These are the heroes that make up the Domestic Violence Task Force of Pitt County. These are the people that saved my life, that saved my daughter's life. Some people look at a guitar and might think it would be cool to learn how to play. Me, I have flashbacks of one getting broken over my back. Most girls use a curling iron to get cute for a night out on the town. Me, I know what it is to have the cord of one wrapped around my neck to the point of almost passing out. Most females have makeup to cover up blemishes or smooth out wrinkles. Me, I learned what makeup was in my twenties when I had black eyes and bruises to cover up instead. Most couples stay in a marriage because they're happy and in love, but I stayed in a marriage because of the fear of dying from trying to leave outweighed the physical, mental, and emotional damage of staying in it instead. Merriam-Webster defines stalking as "the act or crime of willingly and repeatedly following or harassing another person in circumstances that would cause a reasonable person to fear injury or death, especially because of express or implied threats." I define stalking as having your estranged husband sitting outside your job waiting for you to leave work, sending you text messages and pictures of him literally driving up and down every street of Pitt County claiming that he's looking for your house so he can come find you, so desperate to reach out that he literally followed me to the magistrate's office one time when I realized he was behind me and approached me as I got out of my car, almost walking himself into the jail. At one point, he was literally two streets over from where I live and I was outside coloring chalk on the sidewalk with my two-year-old at the time and he told me that. I had to rush her in the house and try and figure out how to explain to a now-crying child as to why I would no longer color and why I was locking the house down like Fort Knox, shutting all the windows, pulling all the curtains, and locking all the doors. Merriam-Webster defines harassment as "to create an unpleasant or hostile situation, especially about uninvited or welcome verbal or physical contact." I define harassment as waking up to literally two-hundred-and-fifty emails, text messages, and phone calls, not counting the hundreds of ones that came while awake. The countless letters that I received and still continue to receive, even having multiple no-contact and DVPOs in place with explicit and vulgar language fantasizing about acts that never took place and wishes that would. Now, I have already been dealing with this for months and literally getting nowhere with the Greenville Police Department. I can tell you how many phone calls I put into them, how many police officers I talked to, how many times they just let him walk. But there was one day I will never forget. Justin Mizell took it too far. It wasn't a matter of this time him threatening me, he threatened my daughter, our daughter. I called Greenville PD five times that day because Justin said he was sitting outside my job in the parking lot. I got transferred to two voicemails, dealt with three attitudes, and told by two police officers that they finally came out to my job, ended up at the wrong end of the building, and made me walk down to them instead. Granted, they were the ones with the big protective guns and made me come to them just to tell me there was nothing they could do because they already had a warrant out for him from the last complaint that I made at the magistrate's office the day before and the daycare wasn't their problem since it was outside the city limits. I called the Sheriff's Department, whose communication team immediately transferred me to a deputy who immediately took me seriously and drove out to my daughter's daycare and sat there for two and a half hours until he got another call just to make sure the threat wasn't real. This guy didn't know me from Eve. I had never made a complaint with the Sheriff's Department before and he knew how serious the situation was. I owe him a hug. He is also the one that introduced me to Detective Nick Farman with the Domestic Violence Task Force and thank God he did. Nick met with me the next night, sat with me for a couple of hours, and instantly realized that Justin Mizell was not someone that you play with. Over the next month, Nick was able to get Justin arrested and has been able to charge him with countless charges of stalking, obstruction, and violating a domestic violence protective order, which has now led to Justin being convicted for a second time and is facing an active prison sentence of eleven to twenty-four and a half years in DOC. I have worked with Nick and the Sheriff's Department hand-in-hand over the last three years. I know I can call Nick whether he's on duty or off, whether it's ten AM or two AM. He has been there for me in more ways and has gone above and beyond in the true call of duty. Whether it's because I've gotten another letter in the mail or just a question to calm my nerves, he's there. Both him and his partner Matt have come out to my office and surveillance the parking lot just to make sure Justin wasn't around. They have followed me home to make sure I was safe. I need to know that I can continue to raise my child in a safe and positive environment with the tribe that I have formed around me and that will continue to teach love and protect her at all costs without having to worry about any negative influence that her father might try. And with the help of the Domestic Violence Task Force, I can do that. I haven't rambled about all of this in hopes that you feel sorry for me. I haven't told you my story in hopes to get my fifteen minutes of fame. I have hoped that you have heard this and taken what I have to say as seriously as I have meant for it. Without the help of people of the Domestic Violence Task Force, I would not be where I am today. I may not be even here at all to tell it. Honestly, when you're working with domestic violence victims, you need someone that can relate. You need someone that knows what the person has been through and can get down on their level because it isn't just about pushing paper. It's a very traumatizing, emotional, mentally exhausting experience in itself and when you're asking that person to relive it, it's not easy. And the simplest task can seem like trying to solve for why and you can't even figure out what two plus two equals because your brain turns to mush. Thank goodness for heroes like Detective Nick Farman, who's standing up for victims and backs me up, like LaShanti Staton, who has gone and sat in court with me on multiple occasions for nothing but support to know that I'm not alone. Thank goodness for those who are willing to get to know the people they're working with and remembers who they are and their story, or at least the situation. Someone who understands what these people are going through and can relate to them on some level. Someone who treats them like a human being and not just more paperwork. You need someone around twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. You need someone that's willing to be on call, to drop everything and be there and know what a victim needs. You need someone that is willing to go above and beyond. But you also need to be willing to show your support for these people as much as those people show their support for their victims. Without having fair pay and wages, you won't have those people. You won't have the survivors that you have that are willing to come before you tonight and tell their stories. You won't have the convictions of stalkers and attackers that are now put behind the bars that they need to be. You won't have people like Nick Farman and LaShanti Staton working for the Pitt County Sheriff's Department and you won't have people like me to live and tell the story. So listen to my story, take what you can from it, and show your support the way that I can because those are the heroes that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Cameron Nicholson? I'd like to remind the speakers to keep their time at five minutes, please. Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Cameron Nicholson. I live in Winneville, North Carolina. I'm here to speak as a domestic violence survivor myself. I have two children that are now in almost thirteen and the experience that I had with the Pitt County Sheriff's Office and especially with the victims' advocates was integral to me still being here in Pitt County now. It was a long period of time that I was not able to leave yet, but the minute that I was able to, I did and I came to Pitt County. And I stayed here for the last four years because I know that I can always call on the veterans of the Pitt County Sheriff's Office to help me when I need things. They have been, they were in the courtroom with me and prepared to testify on my behalf. We were very fortunate that we didn't have to do that and I really hope that you can support what they're asking you to do today.
Thank you. Paula Dance?
I'll be speaking on behalf of an organization, so I'll be asking for the five minutes. Good evening, commissioners and county manager. The first issue that I'd like to address this evening is that I've been accused, sweet me, of being adversarial when making requests to better our agency, when in fact, it is mere advocacy. Advocacy for my officers, for the people who work for me. There is a huge difference between the two. I stand before you again tonight to once again ask that our deputies receive pay to reflect our local counterparts. I've often been told that we are compared to other counties that are a population or size in population. However, it's never been taken into consideration of those counties that they don't have a large university, they don't have a large community college, a school of medicine, or a school of dentistry, all of which drives our local economy in Pitt County. Also, I want to bring to your attention that in years past, I was always told that the city pays more money and that we would never be able to match their salaries. But let me remind you that every department head in Pitt County government, to include the county manager's position, is paid more than the city positions with the same title. All we are asking is that our officer's salary at least match that of our counterparts with the City of Greenville ECU Hospital Police. It is only fair, it is only just, it is only right that our officers receive the pay they work hard for and more importantly, that they deserve. I again ask for consideration for the differential pay and have submitted a plan for it. I also ask for consideration for the positions of the programs director and social worker positions to continue their work addressing mental health and the co-occurring substance use abuse and GED programs. I want to take a moment to read my last, the last person who resigned, just a snippet of it, of a resignation letter. "After much consideration and prayer," he says, "I have decided to resign in hopes to better my future financially. I feel it is best in this current time to explore other opportunities. Working for the Pitt County Sheriff's Office has afforded me many opportunities to learn about myself and interact with people from all walks of life and I have had invaluable experiences." Thank you for your attention, for those of you who paid attention, in advance for your consideration of these requests and allowing me the time to advocate for, advocate for my employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Kiara Clemens?
Good evening. My name is Kiara Clemens, resident of Pitt County, Greenville. I'm a social worker with the Pitt County Sheriff's Office Detention Center. I am a graduate of East Carolina University with a master's in social work. I am a licensed clinical social worker and a licensed clinical addiction specialist. Before I briefly state the purpose of why I stand before you this evening, let me first start by taking the time to thank Sheriff Paula Dance for the opportunity to be before you today. It is an honor to serve in the capacity as a social worker in Pitt County Detention Center. Thank you. For the past two years, I had the pleasure to work at the Detention Center providing direct service for individuals in the sharp and wear program as well as those housed in the general population areas of the Detention Center. Working directly with these individuals give me an opportunity to serve, provide service that produce growth and change in people who simply may need hope along with a second chance for a helping hand. I truly believe that as a social worker here, I add value to this space. My studies, my concentration, combined with adequate experience, have produced a certain level of expertise in providing people inside a detention center a certain, excuse me, with psychoeducation groups and therapy. Brief intervention develops second-seedy plans, recognizing triggers, and learning new coping strategies, which ultimately address the root cause of behavioral challenges that the justice-involved individuals may face. The value of a social worker in a space is to help individuals who find themselves in a detention center suffering from substance abuse use, mental health disorder, and/or aids substance service for veterans affair. I recognize the importance of providing behavioral support. The most rewarding experience for me is to see how much of an impact we make when we bridge the community, bridge the gap between the community and the detention service. What we do here holds value because we provide motivation, hope, using evidence-based models and technologies and techniques that aid in individuals obtaining long-term productive living. What we do here is valuable. My position is valuable. We make a difference. Consider this in your decision moving forward. In conclusion, I would like to leave four important points of why having a social worker within the detention center contributes to reduce recidivism and improving our county. One, a social worker ensures that injustice-involved individuals are equipped with tools, knowledge, and skills to better prepare them to reintegrate back in the community. Utilize... and skills to better prepare them to reintegrate back in the community, utilizing my expertise to reassure the individuals are productive and have a second chance in society. Two, a social worker listens to the individuals, reflects as they spend time in their space, working to provide support and inspiration. A kind word would keep a person warm for years. Three, a social worker links to the community resources and services based off of their immediate needs, for example, attorney contacts, treatment facilities, and et cetera, encouraging individuals to conquer their fears. Four, a social worker committed to implementing cognitive changes that will provide professional development and change in behaviors and proven decision-making and ultimately reducing recidivism because the reality is that everyone pays the price when an individual is detained. Thank you for this opportunity to share my perspective. And after hearing what I had to say here today, one thing we can all agree on, people need people. Thank you and have a great evening.
Thank you. Dr. Evans.
Mr. Chairman, by my stopwatch, you've had 30 minutes of public addresses tonight.
I believe this is the last presentation.
Probably is. I'm not, I'm gonna try to speed it up, but I don't talk fast. I am Dr. Sharon McDonald Evans. It is a pleasure to see you all and thank you for giving me this opportunity. At the last meeting, I came before you to advocate for an increase in salaries for all the deputies of the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, as well as a request for differential pay along with the need to maintain the current positions. There are several great points that were made by everyone tonight and everyone who previously spoke a few weeks ago. But the important thing is that you are our county commissioners. We rely on you to approve a good budget that sounds just and fair. I want to see you all to authentically support the sheriff office and not just during campaign season. Some of the discussions held at the last meeting surrounded issues making comparisons with other counties for the salaries of their staff at their sheriff's offices. Well, comparisons are very difficult to make for Pitt County because we're in a unique situation. We have a regional hospital serving 26 counties, a school of medicine, a large university, which is East Carolina University, my alma mater, a rapidly growing community college, which is Pitt Community College, as well as several industries and businesses in the area. So you can't simply compare our 655 miles in which our deputies patrol to a Wake County who has 835 miles for their deputies' patrol, which is only 180-mile difference because their population size is approaching 1 million. And we're only at 177,372 and counting. However, Wake County's starting salary is 51,500, which is approximately about $10,000 more than what we offer our deputies. If you look at Onslow County, which is actually more comparable in population size, it's 182,921, but it also includes a military base. And the military base, the deputies cannot patrol on base. Their land size is 763 miles, which is comparable to us, but their starting salary is much higher than ours. And keep in mind that Camp Lejeune is the largest marine base on the East Coast in the United States. Now, you should clearly understand that Pitt County deputies are paid less and need more. We are a county that is growing at a rapid pace and our sheriff deputies deserve that. We have the least amount of complaints about all of the law enforcement officers in the county, and I know that because I serve on several boards, which handle a lot of those complaints, from East Carolina University to Greenville Police Department. Most of the time, our people are talking about in the community how professional the deputies are, how they don't engage in stereotyping and racial profiling, and how courteous and kind they are. And that has been historic throughout the sheriff's office in Pitt County, which I can say I've always been proud of. The budgetary decisions that you all make affect all of us. I have a few more seconds. So I encourage you to make wise decisions as our lives depend on it. The question you need to ask yourselves is, what is holding you back from supporting these deputies? And can you sleep well at night knowing that you are not supportive of them while simultaneously telling the public you do? Let us see your support. As I reminded you the last time, we are not in the county of the Show Me State of Missouri, but it's time for you to show us what you're all about because we're watching. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I believe that's all the public addresses to the board. We can now move on to public hearings.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We have one zoning-related item for your consideration tonight. This is actually a major modification to an existing permit. And just to give you a little backstory on this to begin with, we had a major transition last year with our planning legislation for North Carolina to change. Our conditional use permits, all were transferred over as special, Class 1 special use permits that were handled through the Board of Commissioners. So that's going to be important as we talk more about this process tonight. With that, this is a quasi-judicial hearing tonight, not your standard legislative procedures that you handle during rezoning requests. So there are a number of comments that we usually go through, including we're here to hear facts tonight. Everyone that is to speak on this item should be sworn in. There's no ex parte communication. And if appealed, it goes directly to Superior Court. So with that, Mr. Chair, if we can ask the clerk tonight to swear anyone in that wishes to speak on this item. Okay, tonight, we have a public hearing for a major modification to a previously approved site plan and this Class 1 special use permit. And again, that originally was provided in 2017 as a conditional use permit. Same effect, same permit. This is a property that's owned by Joseph and Glenda Brierley on 264, and I'll show you a map in just a minute. Originally, it was permitted for about 31 acres. We were notified through the state agency that handles any mining operations here in the eastern part of the state, out of the Washington office, that there was a modification requested for their mining, their state mining permit. In turn, we did a site inspection and also saw that it was, some of the mining was going outside of our permitted boundary. So tonight, to bring this into compliance and also bring it into check with the state mining permit that's being requested. The request before you is a major modification to almost double the size of the mining operation. So here's the map. The site we're speaking of is out on 264, right at the intersection, the northwest quadrant of the intersection with Ram's Horn Road. So this entire segment here, previously, you may remember, there was a rezoning on this property to allow even the special use or conditional use to be permitted on that site. Just a reminder, our comprehensive land use plan, there are significant floodplains in the area, as well as a large area that's proposed for commercial back west toward the city of Greenville. And these are the land uses in the general vicinity, mostly open agricultural fields sprinkled with some residential in the gold colors. Also, there are conditions within our zoning ordinance for these mining operations. It does require a 100-foot minimum setback from the boundaries. Doesn't apply in this case, but if we were doing some quarrying with rock, more than likely, there'd be blasting involved, but this is not the case. So the hours of operation don't come into play here. There is screening required and also a state mining permit is required to go along with what we do. So to give you an orientation as to what's going on on the property thus far and what the new plan is proposing, this is your existing permit. This is the conditional use permit that was issued back in 2017 for about 31 acres. You can already see the gray area here, the existing excavation area has traversed the boundary in this area and has gone out toward Ram's Horn Road on this side. There's also haul roads that are involved. Those roads actually intersect and come out onto 264 here. Stockpiling is also being done outside the permitted area. And these natural areas, such as the floodplain and a small corner here within the floodway, also play into how this is developed and excavated in the future. There's a riparian buffer that runs along the creek here that also is part of the 100-year floodplain. Part of the berm is already in place for the existing conditional use permit. There's some other vegetation in and around the site that also serves as a buffer. The proposed expansion really encompasses the remainder of the site. So the boundary line and the existing property line are one and the same, so this all equates to about 62 acres in total. There is a 100-foot setback, as we've described already. That is to be remained or retained throughout the development process. And so that is the blue line here. There is also, I know Commissioner Perkins-Williams has had questions about other mining operations. There is a reclamation map that is part of this and is a reclamation permit that is required. And once these ponds are excavated, these areas are excavated, they have to be put back into a state where there are slopes going down into the water areas, and that helps prevent any types of drownings that might be a case if someone just simply falls into the water right off the edge. So those types of reclamation, as well as plannings around the area to include things that would prevent any type of erosion in the future. So tonight, there are several criteria that we normally go through in determining and evaluating these processes. The first one in this case, will this site materially endanger the public health and safety? This is an existing mining operation. There are a number of activities and requirements that run with it, and staff believe that it will not materially endanger the public health or safety if expanded. Will it injure the value of adjoining or running properties? We've talked at length already about berms being required and that 100-foot setback. Is it in harmony with the area? We believe that it is. As far as our zoning ordinance is concerned and some of the different development standards, we believe that it is in harmony with the more rural area here. And is in conformity with our land use plan and other plans, we believe that it is, especially that it still can meet all those development standards, including the 100-foot buffer. So staff is recommending two motions. Number one, acknowledge that the application is complete and that, and then also approve the special use permit, the modification for tonight. There are some additional conditions that go along with the development standards. Flood development permit, there are some floodplains involved. We need to ensure that those are met. There's also a riparian buffer that we need to protect. That's part of the plan. The mining permit is required, and also DOT has had some comments, some additional comments about the driveway on the 264. So those are all additional comments. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're ready for the public hearing.
This time, open the public hearing. Do we have anybody?
No one signed up to speak unless there's anybody in the audience. Mr. Brierley just swore.
Okay. At this time, is there anyone else that would like to speak on the matter? If not, go ahead and close the public hearing.
May I ask one question?
Yes, Jane.
Mr. Rose.
Yes, ma'am.
How long will this opening, when will it end?
I can give you an estimate, but I think that's a better question. It really depends on the demand for the product there. They've been mining for about five years now, and they're about halfway through the site. So, Mr. Brierley, would you care to address that?
I was just curious.
Not definitely, but by the end of the year, sometime next year, we should be out.
I was just curious. Thank you for considering.
You're saying you would be done?
Should be. It all depends on how much we sell. We sell to customers like ST Wood and DBD Concrete, so as their business increases, we sell more in different times of the year. Sometimes our business is high and low, just like falling. But we hopefully last another year.
Thank you. This time, if there's no further discussion, entertain any motions.
Yes.
I have a couple of questions for Mr. Rose.
Sure.
I don't know if that's within the hearing or after.
After, and you've closed it.
That's what I thought, yeah. So are we closed with the hearing?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm curious. First of all, I wanted to say thanks to Planning for staying on top of the permitting. And I'm just curious about some of the circumstances that got us in the position where we have a permit that's, the expansion has gone beyond the permit. And I'm curious how that might have happened and what reasons we might have for that having been, for that occurrence.
I think that's a better question to the operator in this case.
Sure.
We had a, to answer your question. We can just like.
To answer your question, I have my permit guy here. And we knew like a year ago that we were going to need expansion, and we were going to have to talk to the state and get the conditional use permit, well, special use permit from you. But COVID hit, and I think that put a delay in meetings that y'all were having and upon us talking with Goofy, that with y'all not having the meetings, it was kind of hard to get everybody coincided to have those meetings.
So how did, how did the permit from Department of Environment, Energy, and Mineral, how did you miss that?
I didn't miss.
I mean, you're having to obtain a mining permit. I'm kind of.
We had to.
I understand that, but how would you be going ahead with the mining without having done that part of it?
Because they're in the same position that you were in. We put in addition for the mining permit.
You put in the, you did put the application in?
Yeah.
And then what happened?
Same time. And then when it sits in motion, and then everybody sent the letters, which y'all got, and we knew you were going to be getting that, so we could get the conditional use permit.
I'm still not quite following the process here, I guess. And we've run into this, I think, once before where y'all kind of, did y'all not get outside of a permit?
Well, that was, that's somebody different that I was working with.
Okay, but it was this same site?
No, sir.
It wasn't this site?
No, sir.
All right, I apologize. But I'm still, I'm still trying to figure out.
Yeah, it had a lot to do with the COVID because it was hard to get the meetings together and going on what my permit guy was meeting with Goofy and different ones in the state. It's just hard to put it together.
But right now, you still are active on parts of the parcel that has not been permitted?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the reason why we're trying to get it in compliance.
Yeah, I guess my question is a little more general now. So it looks like we don't really have anything to do when people go outside their permit, except try to get the permit back right. And that the people who have the operation are pretty much free to do what they wish, and then they can come along and fix this and.
I don't think that's exactly correct in that.
Okay, thank you.
The state, the state actually is, if I understand correctly, they are pretty much advising them not to excavate any further outside of the permitted area until our permitting process and their subsequent permitting process is completed.
Okay, so when you say advising them, is that something that they would hate?
My understanding is the guy from Washington has, he's out there monitoring, and they are not to be excavating in the area outside the permitted boundary right now.
But they can still use the area for spill, for spill. You can still use that as long as you're.
It was, it was in our, we were, in the beginning, we were, it was in our minds that we were going to extend the mine permit eventually anyway. It just so happened when COVID hit, it kind of put us back on how we could do that. So we're planning on excavating the whole, the whole piece of property. And I know the acreage on the map seems a lot, but a lot of that's buffers.
So this again, I guess, is a little more general. I know that we, this is not with y'all, but we have had issues before, things come before smaller, where someone has been out of permit and we've done, we've done this nice thing for them and gone back and readjusted the permit. And I'm wondering if there's not something that we could do that was a little more, that would be a little more, would help deter people from doing this? Is, and I guess maybe this is a legal. Is, and I guess maybe this is illegal, and I'm not trying to talk about y'all's situation. I wish you well with the mining, but it seems, the circumstance seems a little odd to me that there's not really anything that we can do except grant the permit, and which we should, and I'm not trying, again, I'm not talking about your situation right here. I'm talking about previous circumstances in my time on the board where we've had planning come before us and say, now somebody is doing something that they haven't been permitted to do, and now we wish to give them permission to do what they are already doing. And so, my question, if I'm being a little long-winded, is what are our options here for making this kind of ordinance have a little more teeth in it so that we won't keep coming back? And it's not often, but it does, it has happened several times now. Will you follow me, Jordan?
Yes, Commissioner Aubrey.
Thank you.
And I would say I believe our ordinance does have teeth, and it's just a matter of whether or not staff wants to use it or go around this approach as you just described. So, under the circumstances, there could have been a notice of violation issued ordering to take certain affirmative steps. They could have instituted civil penalties.
Okay.
And those occur, could occur daily, and then it becomes a possibility about going to court to enforce those civil penalties and seeking other type of relief in court. So, those are options that were available to us. Those are administered by James and his staff, and I don't know if they want to talk about why.
I'm not, I'm not trying to get punitive here. I'm just, I'm glad for that clarification.
Well, and I will say, there was a notice sent out. They are under notice of violation to ensure that we gain compliance. We're always looking for compliance, not looking to go out to.
Right, thank you. I think that's, that's the good, good way to do it.
So, fortunately, in this case, they are still able to meet the development standards. I think in a similar situation with Mr. Riley's former mining operation, that was not the case. So, again, out of compliance this time, but in a little bit better shape to bring it into compliance.
Thank you very much, and again, thank you for your attention to these kinds of details, and I appreciate the clarification on what we could be doing if it were a circumstance that warranted, and this is not one of those circumstances. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Everyone can vote, please.
And this includes all the conditions that are in view.
Yes. Yes.
Motion passes. Now, move on to the items for report. Mr. Hill.
Chris Patrick, Commissioners, Manager Gallagher. The Pitt County fiscal year to date, July 1, 2021 through May 31, 2022, combined collection rate for real and personal property is 99.25%. The collection rate one year for real and personal property was 99.15%. Pitt County Tax Administration continues to pursue all outstanding taxes using the necessary remedies available through the North Carolina General Statutes. It's my recommendations, recommendation tonight that the Board approve the May 2022 tax collection report as presented.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. If everyone can vote.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I bring to you tonight the May 31 financial report for the General Fund, the EMS Fund, and the Solid Waste Fund. We are 11 months through the fiscal year at this point, or 91.67% of the year. In the General Fund, we have collected 84.9% of anticipated revenues while spending 85.8% of expenses. On the Solid Waste Fund, we have collected 98.37% while spending 89.02, and in the EMS Fund, we have collected 92.77 while spending 92.84. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brenner. Madam Manager.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few items on your manager's report this evening. Your next meeting date's July 18, 2022, at 6:00 PM, and August 8, 2022, at 6:00 PM, both in this auditorium. Second item is to remind you of the Interstate 587 Ceremony, which will be on Wednesday, June 22, and as, was originally scheduled for 1:00 PM, that time has been changed to 10:30 AM. At 1075 Waterford Commons Drive in Greenville, that's near the hotel as you come in from 264 into Greenville. So, the Interstate 587 Ceremony, June 22 at 10:30 AM, and all are invited to attend. Within the Chairman's authority, reporting back to the Board, a proclamation recognizing the Greenville Industrial Charles M. Epps High School Nat, High National Alumni Association Incorporated 42nd Annual School Reunion Weekend Celebration on July 1 to the 3, 2022. The Chairman signed that proclamation, and Commissioner Ann Huggins has agreed to present it that weekend at the event. Second, the Chair signed a letter of recognition to the Red Oak Rural Fire Department commemorating their 60th anniversary. Lastly, if Alice Keane could just come forward to the podium so that everyone could see her, I would have the pleasure of reporting back to the Board that one of the neat things I get to do in my position as county manager sometimes is participate in events and deliver awards to those who are so worthy, and I have the distinct pleasure of presenting Alice Keane with the Title IX Trailblazer Lifetime Achievement Award at an event that was put on by the Convention and Visitors Bureau at the Convention Center the other week. So, Alice Keane has done amazing things to earn that award, and I just wanted this Board to know, as she is employed part-time with the Planning Department, how proud we are of that accomplishment.
Could I just make a couple of comments? Mr. Chair, I'll be really quick. Thank you so much, and it meant the world to me. They surprised me. I accidentally found out the night before, they were planning for it to be a total surprise, but it, it meant the world that our county manager presented that. But more importantly, I just want to take this opportunity to thank this Board for putting Pitt County in a position to make such a difference. We were celebrating the 50th anniversary of Title IX with that event, and some of our Commissioners, even though you weren't a Commissioner, you were here, and, and this Board's vision over 40 years ago put Pitt County in a position where we gave little girls a chance to play soccer, to play softball, and just kind of the historic note, Pitt County Community Schools and Recreation started the first girls' countywide softball team that later evolved into the Pitt County Girls Softball League, but that was started by you, this, this Board of Commissioners, and what you allowed community schools and recreation to do. So, now on Saturdays, if you come by the park, you'll see girls three years old playing soccer. You'll see girls five to six years old playing basketball and softball, and what a difference that makes in their lives. You were only eight years behind Title I, and then just quickly, on the other end of the span where community schools and recreation has done so much work, it has been such a joy over the years to watch seniors, 65, 70, 75, women to achieve a lifelong dream of playing on a softball team, of playing on a basketball team, and my friends, because of your support, they have been able to play on the local level, on the state finals level, and at Nationals. And just the joy of someone who never got a chance as a little girl, I only had a chance to play basketball, but these women, because of your vision and diligence in making that program possible, have achieved that dream in their later years, and I can tell you it's meant the world to them. Thank you, thank you for giving me the opportunity to play a little part with all of your support in making that happen in our county that is a leader and the best in the East. Thank you.
I have one more item that's not on your printed agenda as an item F, just to report out since the printing. We have had a workers' compensation claim settlement within authority at $45,000 for Mr. Duriel Smith, who had a work accident on November 1, 2021. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. This time, entertain a motion.
Same age. I have a fucking cent.
It's been moved improperly second. Motion passes. If we could now move on to items for discussion. Commissioner Nunley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wanted to keep this item for discussion relatively brief, but did feel in light of the community feedback that we received through our ARPA workshops, and really the state that we find ourselves in, in the county, is a growing, growing county with more and more, more of our residents seeking out recreational opportunities, opportunities in wildlife, and really, this is something that has become part and parcel of what, what everyone in the county does, and wanted to start the conversation about what county's role in this is. Our municipalities have been very active and continue to be very active in growing and building out more and more robust trail systems, more and more robust park systems, more and more robust sports leagues, and as those municipalities grow, and, and as our county grows, the thought that it might be a really good, the county might be a really good vehicle to, to kind of pull the glue together so that folks that are looking to locate to our region can really have a, you know, really full picture of the opportunities that we've got here. And so, that's really the idea behind the conversation, and that we've, we've really handled this in a way, limited capacity in years past, but I think the time is now, especially with what we're looking at doing with ARPA, to, to explore bringing someone in whose job it is to think about our parks and how our parks and our trails and our, and our wildlands integrate and work with, with all of our other partners in the county. What it's, is not, isn't asked to, to do anything necessarily tonight, but it is to, I guess, allow management to start to explore what that might look like and come back to us with maybe a, a way forward so that we can be positioned to utilize those ARPA funds when the time comes to really do what the community is asked us to do. In particular, I think we've heard a lot about north of the river, we've heard a lot of ideas outside of what we're currently doing, and so what, what I'd like us to do is broaden that vision and go out and see if we can do something a little bit bigger and more dynamic.
I'd love to see us go forward with some, some investigating into the potential for more in the county. I know in Fountain, you know, we have three parks, but we would, the town would love to be involved, I believe, in a, a system of county parks. Farmville, I've talked informally, you know, they've got a much more active rec department. Fountain doesn't have one, but Farmville does, and they're interested in getting under an umbrella. I mean, I think we have so many, as, as we can see with that terrific, the app that's just come, that we've just put out, the Trails app, that we've made some really good steps, big steps to expand our recreational offerings. There's something, there's some master plans that we could possibly look at? What have we, what have I've heard about?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may. So, if I'm hearing you right, I think it's, it's an opportunity to really explore how we can take what we're doing to the next level, and I think there's really probably, to put you on the path to accomplish what I think you're suggesting if the Board so desires, is really kind of a three-step process, and what I might recommend to the Board is that at your next meeting, either in July 18 or your, or one of your first, your first or second meeting in August, that this Board hear a report from Alice Keane or James Rhodes on what's currently in place. So, I don't think we want to lose or minimize the value of what has historically been accomplished through the years through community schools and recreation and that Advisory Board, and the monumental changes that they have implemented in this community and throughout and continue to do, for example, most recently with a, a walking trail for seniors in the Bethel area, in terms of partnering to see how we can make that happen. So, I think step one is this Board fully understanding the structure that's currently in place as background. I think step two is to consider, once you hear all that, whether you believe, and I think you may, that it warrants an update to our county parks and recreation master plan, countywide. So, there's a, there's a master plan for the Alice Keane District Park, there's also a master plan for the countywide parks throughout the county, and so I think, once you hear what's existing and in place, and we know what we want to hold on to and where we can see opportunities for improvement and growth, then I think we steer that towards an updated Parks and Recreation Master Plan if the Board so desires to use ARPA money, and then depending upon the recommendations in that report, determine what resources exist and what resources may need to be added in order to fully implement and have a more robust system to meet current needs, as I think is being visioned by members of this Board. If that's a plan that the Board would be comfortable following, I think that may get us where we're going in fairly short order and consistent not to lose an opportunity within the ARPA spending window.
Do you need a consensus or a motion?
I'd like to ask a question on that, as long with that. Could we also have some collaboration with the City of Greenville to, because there's a lot of inner-city matters, recreational activities, and I think that's, that's critically needed. So, I, I think that we're talking about bringing the city and the county more in, in conjunction with some of the needs and working together as a group. Could we possibly, maybe thinking that in terms of the city and county working together?
Absolutely.
And maybe not limited at just the City of Greenville, but all municipalities.
All the municipalities, I think.
But I think that'd be a great idea.
Because I know Farmville is doing a lot.
Yeah, they are.
On their own, a whole lot, and Fountain participates, I think.
We don't have a lot to, I mean, we are interested, but we don't have much budget, and we have trails and.
Right, but I'm saying some of the people that live in Fountain are in that direction or participating with the Falls.
And the interconnectivity between trails and physically, and then idealized towns and getting support is great. That's good.
So, you know, there could be a recrea, a county recreational committee or group or whatever and have representatives from some of these towns, and I think it would be, you know, because all of the towns can't have the same thing that everyone has, but I think they're yearning for something to be a little bit more organized, and I think they would like to be a part.
And I think as step one, the Board may be surprised to hear the extent of collaboration from and with municipalities already.
Yes.
And what that's, what that has produced to date, and how on that, Community Schools and Recreation Advisory Council, all various represent, municipalities have participated and been represented, but I think you're absolutely right, that the key to taking this to the next level is to maintain and enhance that municipal collaboration, and we don't want to reinvent the wheel either. If there are things our, our master plan recommends we do that we're not already doing, and there is a municipality that's already very good at it, we need to share those resources, share that knowledge, and work together efficiently so that the opportunities are spread throughout the county. And I think, if I'm understanding the goal correctly, I think step one, find out what we have, step two, update the master plan, step three, decide what resources are necessary to implement those improvements.
I'm a commission to move forward with that plan.
Second.
Any further discussion? It's been moved improperly second. If everyone can vote, please.
Yes.
Motion passes. If we can now move on to items for decision, Mr. Taylor and Mr. Corley.
Good evening, everyone. A pleasure to be in front of you tonight to discuss this first item for decision, which is a contract for new permitting and inspection software. This has been in the works for quite some time. This was on the CIP list, Capital Improvement Plan list, that was approved by this Board last year. A portion of the funds were approved for this budget year as well as a portion for next year. We went through the process, the RFQ process of looking at vendors. We went through the process, the RFQ process, of looking at vendors. And through that process, we, we looked at what these vendors could provide and what may be best for Pitt County. Through that process, we've selected Tyler Technologies, which is their integrative product. You may have heard that word. That is the same software that is utilized by the City of Greenville. We think that'll be a plus for us utilizing a similar system that those, the public and contractors and builders, which utilize the city system and also do work within the county, are very familiar with that already. We think it'll be, be very helpful for them. It's a big deal. This, this is a transformational project for permitting and inspections. There's multiple agencies within the county that utilize this software, including environmental health, planning and permitting and building inspections, planning, emergency management. So a lot of different agencies and also tax utilize this software. So it'd be a very, very transformational thing. It would really help the public, make it easier for them to get information on the fly. Our inspectors and a lot of the environmental health and inspections, we're able to be able to perform inspections within the field, real-time. It's all web-based, so we're really excited about it. The total contract amount is $1,265,647. That is a five-year contract. There's an initial implementation fee of $431,823, and each year thereafter will be $208,456. I will mention that this was, this purchasing will be through the Sourcewell process of, of doing things, which is available to us. So tonight, we're asking for approval of this contract with Tyler Technologies, and we're asking for authorization from the manager to sign the contract.
Any discussion?
Move approval.
It's been moved improperly second. If everyone could vote. Motion passes. Thank you. Madam Manager.
Yes, this is, this next item is really just authorizing me to sign a form. Back in January and March of this year, this board already approved us moving forward with the Pitt Community College welding building. We've already authorized the design funds, and we estimated the project in an, in a, in a project ordinance in the amount of about $14.8 million. In order for the community college to move forward with the detailed design necessary to keep this project moving forward, there needs to be a Form 3-1 that is signed by the county manager pledging that we will fully fund this project, and then that must be approved by the State Community College Board. So since that number is in excess of my authority, I've brought it to the board for you to authorize me to sign this form. Since your printing of this package, it was projected by John Farkas to be $14.6 million. Since that time, John Farkas has updated the number on this form, and it is now $15.2 million for the same project. We had estimated 14.8, so it's still within that realm, and this is an estimate. Of course, you won't know the final cost until it goes out for bid and the design is ultimately created. So I have reviewed these forms, and I'm asking your authorization for me to sign and return them to the community college.
Mr. Chairman, move approval.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Mr. Andrews. And Mr. Turner, if you could start the timer for Mr. Andrews.
Fifteen seconds. Half. On your mark, yet set. On your mark, yet set.
That's right. That's right. Mr. Chairman, thank you for having me tonight, and our manager, members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to be coming, to be able to come over here and kind of break up the, the normal presenter, so I really appreciate that. Happy to announce, we have been participating and searching for grants for some time, looking to help some of our drainage ways in the county. Our, our office has been very active and diligent in trying to find, find grant opportunities to help drainage in countywide. So tonight, we, the Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program, the strap program, we put forth an application into this program. Happy to say that we have been awarded $414,975 through this program, which is with the Division of Soil and Water Conservation with the State of North Carolina to remove storm debris. Where we are going to be working, we're going to be working north of the river. Phase one, we're going to be going and focusing in on Canita Creek. The grant period runs from July 1st, 2022 through 20, June 2023. There is a possibility of renewal of funds with this. So we're, we got our fingers crossed. We got in, we got some money, so we're going to continue to monitor that as well. There are no county matching funds for this grant. Here's a map of the area of Canita Creek. It's roughly 11 miles of area that we'll be concentrating. I do have some pictures attached as well, it's kind of what we're seeing that's causing some issues. As you know, just, I guess this past week on Friday, the windstorm that we had, we getting calls. This is a continuous program. This is not something that we're just going to one and done and get out. So we're continuing to assess areas throughout the county, and it's, it is complaint-driven. So we, we, we get calls and we go out and, and monitor those areas closely. There are stipulations for the funds. The stipulation was to remove all the debris out of the 100-year floodplain. And as many of you know, in eastern North Carolina, that's kind of hard to do in certain places with the floodplains that we have. However, there are some manners in that we can follow in the chipping, the material cabling, or strapping the material on a secured manner outside of the immediate stream area and burning are the three ways we can do that. So staff recommendations is to approve the budget amendment for the amount of money for the program funds and authorize the chairman to sign the contract, and also to approve a staffing request for a one-time, limited, full-time employee to manage these programs. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any discussion?
I'm happy to see you very young and get started yesterday.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. If everyone could vote. Motion passes.
If I could just make one comment on this, just for the board's information as well now that it's been approved. I wanted you to know that in your recommended, in the requested budget, and the proposed, and the approved budget, you added $100,000 per year for snagging as a program for this. And when that was requested and approved, Soil and Water also asked for this one position. And I did not recommend that position to oversee these funds. As a result, and that was not in your recommended and approved budget, as a result, they were motivated to continue to search further for grant funds. And the grant funds that they received contained administrative funds, which would cover, at least in part, a portion, the cost of that person. And so I applaud PJ for going that extra mile to find those funds. And as a result, we've talked about budgets being flexible and moving. And so with the addition of now almost a half a million dollars, that includes administrative funds, I think it's entirely appropriate to add that headcount for the time-limited position of those grant funds, and that's clear at the get-go. So just a shout-out to thank you for making that effort to get things done.
Yes, ma'am. And I'll piggyback off what Mary Perkins Williams, Commissioner Perkins says, that drainage affects everybody. So we're, it really is to help everybody in the community. So we really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Burnett, you're up again.
Hello again. Tonight, I bring for you a budget amendment to look at the sheriff's administrative building project ordinance. When we started the fiscal year off, this was a $6 million project. And then as we started getting to the numbers, we initially set up a project budget ordinance of $7,631,978. As we moved further through the fiscal year, when looking at our costs, talking to our architect, we decided that we needed additional funding to tune to around 13 and a half million dollars. And we made the decision as part of our CIP process to go out and seek a local bank loan for this project instead of cash funding the money. So what I'm asking you tonight is to keep of the original 7.6 million, 980,000 in the project ordinance to cover our existing and ongoing architect, engineering, and legal costs, and then to remove, to move back to the general fund, 6,651,978, back into our general fund, fund balance. I also want to put in your head, as we do move, I, I think it's smart to keep the project ordinance in place, and then when we do acquire a loan, to put the loan proceeds into this account. So that's why we're keeping the 980 in there and keeping the account active. So at this time, I'd like to move the unused money back to the general fund, and because it's fund-to-fund, that requires your approval through a budget amendment.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Motion passes.
If you would, since the sheriff isn't here.
So the, again, I got another one, too. So you got a lot of me. The sheriff's office is part of the ARC program you all approved back in February, the opportunity to replace their radio system. And then as we moved into the spring, they came back to you all to ask to start that process, and they have, they are at the point now where they're asking you, because this is above the manager's threshold of spending, they would like to go ahead and start the acquisition of their new radio system pro, uh, equipment using ARC funding. That cost is $1,815,672.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved in second.
And if I may, for the chairman, just clarify that this 1.8 million is above the amount of money that's included within the recommended budget for the sheriff. Among, it's above the 40 million that has been allocated for the sheriff's office in your budget. This is the same type of expenditure that would be the 13 and a half million on the sheriff's administration building and the $600,000 for additional vehicles that was set aside just for the sheriff's office.
650.
Outside of the budget. So this 1.8, that 650, and that 13.5 are above the $40 million allocation within the sheriff's existing budget.
And, and this would take care of all of the technology, and it would tap into as a merging base for communication?
Yes, that's exactly right.
All right. My last thing tonight is the sale of county-owned property on April 4th. You all allowed us to post on GOV deals, two pieces of property, 1610 West Third Street and 1612 West Third Street. We went through the bidding process, and the bids closed out on June 13th. The highest bidder was Terry Yead with TSA Holding Group. The two winning bid amounts were $2,701 and $3,025. We are asking for your permission tonight to go ahead and start the sale process and authorize the chairman to sign the deed transferring the property.
Move approval.
Second.
Unless there's any further discussion, it's been properly moved in second. Everyone could vote, please. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Looks like the last two items are with Madam Manager.
Yes, there are two conferences coming up. The NACO Conference, National Association of Counties, is item number seven, and you will need a voting delegate for that conference. Those signed up to attend are Commissioner Floyd Huggins, McLauren, Perkins Williams, and Nunley. If the board would select one of those commissioners to be the voting delegate at the NACO Annual Conference, July 21st to the 24th.
Is any one of them that would like to?
I'll nominate, I'll nominate Ann Floyd Huggins.
Are they down there saying they don't want to do it?
Well, I did it last year.
Commissioner Perkins Williams, was that a second?
Yes.
It's been moved in properly second. Everyone could vote, please.
Now, they don't want to show up at meetings. I have a question about the NACO. Am I, are we going to the early session?
The conference is July 21st to the 24th. The clerk will give each of you your individual packages that verifies your airfare, your accommodations, and the events that you're scheduled to attend.
Cause some of my committees are meeting in the early ones, and I was just wondering.
When I registered you, I made sure that you were, you will arrive in time to attend your committee meetings.
Thank you. That's, that's, that's what I want to know. They wanted to know that. Thank you. Thank you.
We would not allow you to arrive after your meetings have taken place. The second item is designation of a voting delegate at the NCACC, the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Annual Conference, which will be held in August in Cabarrus County. Those registered to attend are Commissioner Floyd Huggins, Perkins Williams, and McLauren. We need a voting delegate among those three.
You're going to do McLauren. Ms. McLauren is nominated.
It's been moved improperly second. If we could vote on that, please. Motion passes. Moving on to Commissioner comments, starting with Commissioner Ward.
No comments.
Mr. Huggins.
Well, I just have one comment about the, and PJ looking, finding money. And we thank our county manager for, for her role, and that's why we pay you the big bucks.
Thank you, I think.
Mr. Bryce, Chair. Mr. White.
I didn't say last time, but I did want to thank Janice and Brian and all of our county staff that worked really hard on our budget. I think it was a great budget. It's very fiscally responsible. You know, I love, I love those words. And it also, it showed support for all of our departments, and it showed support for all of our employees, and y'all really did a great job with that. So I didn't thank y'all last time, but I want to thank y'all this time. And yes, and thank you to PJ for finding that grant money.
Commissioner Nunley.
The comment.
Commissioner Perkins Williams.
I have an unusual comment. It's not about trash. I like to say that I'm very pleased with the strategic planning and information I saw in the economic development, and I look forward to seeing commercial development in District Two, Kelly Andrews.
Commissioner McLauren.
Go ahead.
There are no further comments or discussion.
Can we move to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, I got the vote.
Motion, or, meeting's adjourned.